It says it's on and we are streaming to YouTube. Wow, greetings, everybody. Welcome to another regular edition for the United States Pirate Party. My name is Drew Bingaman. I will be your captain for this evening. We will do some identifications. V, I see you first.
Yes, good evening. V from the great state of Texas, Swarm Care Manager. Oh, Sarayio Viallo, Sophie Vance.
Thank you, V. Ari, I have you next on the list here. Are you still with us, Ari? Oh, there we go.
Yeah, yeah, I just needed to reach over. Hello, my name is Ari Gabrick. I am with the I am with the Vermin Campaign and I am from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
All right, awesome. Oh, okay, now I got all kinds of. Ben, you're next.
Howdy, I'm Ben Horlick. I am the newly elected Quartermaster for the United States Pirate Party as well as the Representative from Texas.
All right, thank you, Ben. Light Rider, is that Frank?
Maybe? Yes.
Yes, okay. Frank, Frank from Texas is, Ben, are you voting for Texas or is Frank voting for Texas?
I am voting for Texas.
Okay. All right, Wanda, you're next.
Wanda, observing from Florida.
Thank you very much. Eli?
I'm Eli. I am the Voting Massachusetts Member and the recently elected Director of Public Relations.
Awesome, thank you, Eli. And so our, one of our big guests tonight is Vermin Supreme. Welcome, Vermin. Oh, wait, you're
Unmute myself, unmute myself. Hello there, my fellow pirates. My name is Vermin Supreme and I would like to welcome you and thank you very much, wholeheartedly, for your endorsement as your presidential candidate. And I truly do appreciate this opportunity. And I believe that together, our synergy can create a new level of awareness and perhaps excitement for my campaign and the Pirate Party. And what is exciting for me is, of course, if indeed that you all in your wisdom agree with the premise that this is an opportunity to create greater awareness of the Pirate Party in the United States and what they stand for and what they are promoting and things of that nature. And of course, I see this happening through a combination of social media, ideally viral marketing, a lot of exciting pirate, Vermin Supreme branded merchandise. I have decided, once, once we agree on our messaging and the method that we should deliver that messaging, that I will be re-entering the ranks of podcast guests. Back in 2020, I gave like literally hundreds of interviews because there was that interest and I believe there is that backlog of interest. And so, once we get together and agree on our messaging, I look forward to that. I look forward to offering my services or what I would like to do is tour, do some more touring. I've been doing a little bit of touring here and there, but I think it would make sense for us and our attempt to increase membership and interest in the Pirate Party to concentrate on those states in which we have chapters. So I would like to, you know, offer to work with representatives of those various states on a series of events through each given state for those purposes of brand awareness and excitement generation. And what I would also very much like to see happen for me, because I'm hoping to attend the RNC and DNC, is developing street teams of, you know, sexy pirates working, working the streets. And yes, I think there's a lot of opportunity and I would like to be able to, you know, find our common ground where you feel comfortable and how you feel comfortable with me representing the party and its platform to the people. Thank you. I'm Vermin Supreme. I look forward to your feedback and I look forward to working with you.
Awesome, thank you, Vermin. So that was a long-winded, but I think you covered almost everything you wanted to talk about tonight, but we will come back to, we will come back to that, though. Johnny, you are next on my list to introduce, please.
Hi, I'm John Robinson, Secretary for the Pennsylvania Pirate Party.
Thank you. Dez? I can't hear you. Can anybody hear Dez? No. No, you're, okay.
You can just type it, Dez.
Yeah, you can just type your intro, that's fine, just for the record. Yeah, you're going unmuted, but I don't know if there's an issue with your microphone on your computer or all right, well, let's, I'll move on to Rich. You're our last for, for an introduction. No, you're muted, Rich.
I mute yourself.
Yeah, it's on the bottom bar.
How about now?
There you go.
All right, we'll do that again. Hey, everybody, I'm Rich. I am a mercenary, a propagandist for hire, working with Vermin Supreme and his awesome team to get everybody free ponies.
All right, great. Thank you, everybody. First thing I'd like to do real quick is ask, is there anything, V, I think you had some things you'd like to talk about real quick? Some events maybe that you're working on?
Yeah, out of the way, there's June 15 and June 19 coming up, a couple of days and a couple of days afterward. Mostly trying to do a little bit of social media, trying to put out a message that, you know, pirates are welcoming. We have our core values that, you know, you say you're a pirate and you, you have our core values. Doesn't matter if you're an alien invader, we can talk, we can talk. So for the June 15, we'll have a big gypsy shindig, kind of just like get-together. I have invited some of the international pirates. I have invited some of the UK pirates. Australia might be a little bit too early for Australia. Usually Australia and New Zealand. Join us for a dip for the earlier in the morning type of events. What else can I say? Vote Pirate and this is the, June 15 is the big Pirate Pride event. And then June 19 is just gonna be like a blog post and pretty graphics that I have found. And the rest of the events after that, we will have July 4th for Independence Day and then we can continue talking in September for either we want to do another camera walk or another Talk Like a Pirate Day and so forth.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, all right, great, that's good stuff. Ben, also, real quick, Johnny, go ahead.
Just a small thing, for people who aren't aware, July 4th is also when Britain is holding their elections. So for sheer entertainment value, that's gonna be pretty fun.
Interesting. Ben, question real quick, anything, is there anything to report treasurer-wise update or if you guys probably haven't gotten anywhere yet, I'm assuming?
No, yeah, I was gonna reach out to Joe probably tomorrow, just to give him a bit to kind of get back and get settled. I did, I did have a good conversation with Dustin, though, transitioning the Bean Counter materials like that, that workbook and the Word Doc of the report. And so kind of walked him through that and so I think he'll be set for kind of the basics of it. And then me and him are gonna kind of, you know, scheme on other ways that we can improve, you know, this general transparency and, you know, accountability on the financial side and whatnot.
I like that terminology.
Which part?
The scheming part, the scheming.
Yes.
Okay, um, is there anybody, does anybody else have any, anything they would like, they need to announce before we get into talking a little more about some events and working with the campaign to try and, you know, raise our visibility? I'm not, I am oh, yeah, we got, we got
I introduced myself at the very beginning.
Yeah.
I introduced myself at the very beginning, Dez. Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm not seeing any, I'm not seeing any other hands. So, um, what I think we're gonna need from the pirates is some people that are wanting to work with the campaign. So we're gonna need some volunteers. I know we do have some people that are excited about working with Vermin and, and the campaign and not everybody is here tonight. I know we have at least three or four notable absences. But, and Mitch, Mitch is probably gonna be our guy on the ground in Chicago, Vermin, for, for the DNC. So we'll make sure, I make sure that you guys get hooked up with that. Joe, like I said before, who's also not here, is gonna be the guy that, when you're in Massachusetts, he's on the ballot for a state rep candidate. He's a state rep candidate on the ballot, so that would be great for you guys to work together when you're up there. And Ari, go ahead.
Um, I was gonna make a request for volunteers. I am looking for a few people who would be willing to do and help me with data sets. So if there's a specific ask that I can get to, that's gonna be definitely that. So anybody with marketing or analytics or any of those backgrounds, I would greatly appreciate some assistance from.
We definitely do have some of those type of data nerds in this group. V, go ahead.
I just want to point out support.uspirits.org, that's where we have our volunteer form.
Okay.
If you, if, yeah, if you go to support.uspirits.org, scroll down, says sign up, register as a volunteer. In the notes, just, you know, write your skills and write what, you know, you want to work with Ari, what you want to work on.
So what I'd like to see, can we get, if we don't have it already, and I haven't, my time in Discord has been very short this, this week. Can, can we get a, can we get a generalized campaign, Vermin campaign thread in the Discord and maybe have sub, maybe sub that to, to different, different things? Maybe at least start something on that. We can, we're, I can, I, yeah, can I, if IT can do that, that'd be great. That way, we can, we can kind of put everybody that wants to get involved, kind of point them to that as a starting place. And so I know Ari, you're on, you're on our Discord, Dez, you're on our Discord, right? So at least you two, you two at least, and I don't know is, if Rich has gotten on there or not, but okay, cool. So at least you guys can have if you got, you know, that way we can kind of have a little bit of back and forth and have a place where we can talk together. That sounds awesome. Oh, Vermin, just, just in case you missed it, we are live streaming, so if there's anything that's, you know, a little bit of proprietary that you don't want to share with the whole world, just a warning. Just to, because we are, we are streaming on our YouTube channel, so yeah, so no, no, no secrets to, no secrets to the Elixir of Life or anything like that tonight.
Okay, that, that's fair. I understand you all run some sort of crazy democratic organization here and all and yes, with some sort of transparency of some sort and
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of one of our core values, so.
I am willing to work within those parameters. I mean, I, I know we haven't made you sign any NDAs for our campaign, but I, I think we'll be able to figure, figure it all out.
Yeah, yeah, I think so, too.
For our needs, but yeah, no, I think everything I stated out is pretty much what I have in mind. Yes, so back to you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Vermin. Okay, so I guess, I guess we're looking, we're looking for volunteers to get involved. We're looking for people to be, to be our representatives from the party at some of these events that we have coming up. Dez, can you, Dez, can you make sure that we get a, like, like any of the public events that are coming up? Maybe, I don't know, if a calendar icon or something like, I don't know how you're keeping the list of events, but and Jolly Mitch has joined us.
Ahoy, I actually just finished roughing a Lucia Libre show. I'm exhausted, but I am ever-present.
Thank you, Dez, and thank you, Jolly Mitch. Would you like to identify?
Ahoy, my name is Jolly Mitch of the Chicagoland Nye, the Illinois Pirate Party, friend of the show.
So we, we do have a little bit of a project for you. Mitch?
I'm ready.
Yeah, it's for the D, it's for during the DNC. Vermin, Vermin's talking about having some, trying to get some street teams.
I unfortunately planned ahead and I'm gonna be out of the country during the DNC in Chicago.
Oh, no!
Yeah, I will, I, unfortunately, I will be in Canada. So I do, I appreciate the, the the reaching out and if I wasn't in Canada already, I would absolutely be helping Vermin.
Well, let me, let me put it this way, gee, if you have any people that you know of on the ground there that maybe, maybe would be interested, maybe we can get them hooked up on the
I can definitely throw, throw that information towards a couple of people, see what I can do for you guys.
Yeah. Well, darn it, that's, that's see what, see what happens when you plan to be out of town because a bunch of assholes are coming in. I mean, you know, that's the same way and where, where is it, Milwaukee? That's where the fascist convention is? Yeah, yeah, Milwaukee.
I think so.
Why? Like, Jesus.
Just to, just to stop
I joined me when Chris from Milwaukee.
Background of Milwaukee.
What's that, Mitch?
Just in an attempt to ruin the socialist history of Milwaukee.
Oh, okay.
Bring fascism to the city instead.
When did they move Nuremberg to Wisconsin?
Well, at least if they'd moved Nuremberg to Wisconsin, then there'd be at least a race track there. That'd be at least some, some reason. Geez, okay, so, okay, so Mitch, welcome. Thanks for joining us. Wanda, I forgot to ask you.
Yes?
We, there was some talk of Florida possibly being ready soon for PNC membership? How's that going?
Well, I think the main thing is we need a website.
Okay.
There's a few people who came in recently to the Florida Discord server and I'm trying to organize us to have a meeting soon to talk about how we're going to like organize things.
Okay, awesome. You might want to talk with Ty or get in touch with Ty, because he's working on trying to make it easier for everybody to get websites up and running. He's, he's got a whole thing he's working on, so if you want to maybe reach out to him and, and check with him, that way maybe we can get you guys, get you guys up and running.
I'll make sure to do that.
All right, awesome. Um, okay, let me see here. Dez, is your audio working yet? I guess that's, I think that's a no. Now, I don't know, you, you have, is there a physical switch for your microphone, maybe? Anyways, all right, well
Check for, in the audio settings that you're not pulling from a, like you're using the right microphone and
Oh, yeah, there's a
audio channel that doesn't exist.
Yeah, if you go to the
It's like the up arrow next to the microphone icon.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, do that, hit the up arrow next to the microphone at the bottom bar. And then see what your, see what your microphone is set to. Because it might be the wrong one. Anyways, okay. Now, that's not how, okay, shoot, okay. All right. Um, so we, we're looking for, we're looking for volunteers for, to, to help with the campaign and for in-person stuff for us. Hey, this is what we've been trying to do, right? More, more excuses for in-person stuff. And so we will, Dez, I think you said you're gonna send us a Google Calendar link so that we can see the public events that we've got coming up so that we can help organize that. Okay, awesome.
Yeah, and, and Ari, I can see if I can help with the, some of the data, whatever it is you need help with on that, we can take that offline and see if that's something that I, that I can do.
I I have a couple of ideas of things that I could do. I want to try and formulate a few, at least two, if not three hypotheses. And specifically, I, I had an idea I'd like to implement that I used in the last couple of campaigns that I was on that helped with a lot of the propensity modeling. And in particular, I would like to focus in on something that I used for the, something similar that I used for the LP. Not completely, but based off of the, the stuff that I did for them. But I would like to find a time to sit down and talk with people who are interested in data. I don't want to do anything too heavy. And I want to make sure that whoever does decide to be able to volunteer is not overburdened, because that happened a lot in some of the other political campaign work that I've done and data is a lot, there's a lot of data.
Yeah, for sure, no, that, that all makes sense. Yeah, and you know, just for, for your reference, so my background is a little bit more on just kind of the general statistics side. So like, I've never done, you know, sort of that kind of modeling for campaigns, but I have done a lot of modeling in, in theory. So hopefully I can be, you know, of some use somewhere.
Yeah, no, definitely. I started out in flow cytometry and then got into data analytics and marketing analytics.
Nice, 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 nice. Cool, yeah, what's the best way to get in touch?
I am on the Discord server and I will send you over my email. And then, Vermin, when we're working with your data, do we still have the same, do we still have the same NDA when we're working with all of that that I can send over?
Yeah, I'm fine with signing something if you need me to sign something.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, there's probably a little bit that needs, certainly needs to be discussed on, on data sharing, but we certainly look forward to using your data to, to further our project here, yes, of course. And it would only be reciprocal to do such a thing, so it's sensible like that, but we haven't really talked about that particular agreement or arrangement. Thank you, thank you for asking.
Yeah, no, it's, it's one of the reasons I came here. There were a couple of people who had said that, that they had experience with data and
Yes, yes.
You know me.
Yes, of course. And if I may chime in here, in a related note, I, I think one of the exciting things for me in this partnership with the Pirate Party is, you know, we both know our basic base rates. I mean, we know how many followers we have currently, we know how much income we have, we, we know what the bill, the things like that are. So we have this base and we have five months to make a full court press with it to try and increase our visibility, increase a brand awareness and let the people know that Vermin Supreme Pirate Party are a thing and that you should pay attention to us and, and join and hopefully support. So, or at least follow or whatever, but I, I like the fact that we have these base metrics that we will be starting with, where we will be able to measure any, any impact that we might have with our various strategies that we will be running. Thank you, that, that is all, that's long-winded enough, bye.
Thank you, Vermin. All right. Ari, one of our other guys, Dustin, who's in, he's in the Discord also, I think is V, do you remember how he spells that? Maybe you could put that in the chat for Ari.
It's like Das, Das Muné, D-A-S-M-E.
Is that it? D-A-U-S-U-M-A, M-E, M-E.
Something like that.
We had a talk
Yeah, I got it up.
We had a talk last night and I'm going over some of the data that he's put together. I want to be able to see, because that was the, what program, what, what project was it? It was the scorecard sample for the research framework and that one was, yeah. Yeah, I was really, I was really very interested in combing over that to, to see how that data was collected. And I've already touched base with, with him specifically on, on other data analytics work.
No, that's all, okay, great, I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of each other, so that's good.
Yep. I, mine, mine is, my handle is Irsinia Veed. I already joined the Discord server, so I'm on there.
All right, well, welcome to the Discord server.
Yeah. I love that thing.
I, I guess I'm gonna open, let's kind of open this up for any, any, any questions, concerns about the campaign other than, you know, it's just anything, just kind of open, open discussion. Just raise your hand and be recognized. Wow, well, um, Ben, go ahead.
Yeah, I would say, and I don't know if it necessarily needs to happen, you know, immediately, but I think on our end, I think it'd be good to get, you know, like, like some semblance of the pla, of a platform committee, kind of as, that can kind of work on, you know, refining the message and, and whatnot as, as Vermin was talking about earlier, so we have kind of a point of contact on kind of the policy side, I guess, as well, the platform side.
V, you put your, you just put your hand down. You, you would like to speak, okay. I'm gonna go to Vermin and then I'll be right back to you. Vermin, you're still muted.
Unmute yourself.
I, I just wanted to agree with that statement that we could definitely use some snazzy propaganda with bullet points and all that good stuff. And in terms of the calendar, I want to point out the dates of July 26th and 28th. I am doing a show in Towson, Delaware, so if the Pennsylvania delegation wants to put together any short meet and greets for the campaign in that vicinity, which I guess would be Philadelphia and around, I'd be happy to do a house party if they didn't have time to do a venue party, but definitely available for meet and greets right at that period of time, like the 29th or 30th or 31st would be good times to have events in those areas. And that, that's, yeah, thank you, that's all.
I, just on that, the note of propaganda, I have a I reworked up my trifold for the US Pirate Party instead of the Pennsylvania Pirate Party. It's an all, I used a, I used a black version. Uh, it's in all, I used, uh, I used a black version of the USPP logo, so the whole thing can be printed on a black and white laser printer and, and be a lot cheaper to, to get out there. So I will be sharing that, I will be sharing that very soon with the group. Uh, V, you were next, and then Mitch.
Mitch, um, if, are you going to talk about the platform meeting that we're, where we were going to meet together?
Uh, I was not. So if you want to mention the platform, uh, go ahead. I, uh, my, mine's just really a statement, so I can wait.
Okay, so, um, in terms of platform and platforms, looking at each other's platform, um, I think we can do that as a come over, um, kind of just like, uh, we don't have to have a big meeting. We could just like probably shoot some emails. Where we could, you know, say, these are where our platforms align. This is where we don't, and we don't have to align on everything. That's the joy of being a pirate, that we have the core values and those we align with. And everything else is just like, well, we can discuss it, we can talk. Um, and, and I can, I can get with platform because last week we really didn't have a platform meeting to kind of talk that out and, and just, you know, look at the documents and, and, um, and anyone on the, um, on the Thursday at, um, nine thirty, um, Eastern can come and look at that with us in the platform committee to look at the both platforms, the both websites and just, you know, do a come over through the, the core values and, um, everything that we have.
Okay, thank you, V. Uh, Wanda, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to bring up that, um, that, uh, Vermin was mentioning the, that he was doing something in Delaware and we have a Delaware guy, someone ought to let him know, uh, about that. Our Delaware guy, so that if he can be there, he can try to be there.
Yep, we will, yeah, that's, uh, that's, I'm going to try and make sure that everybody i- i- is aware of the, of where the events are. Um, so, yeah, so that we can try to get as many people out to events as possible and try to get at least one representative to kind of maybe set up a little bit of a table or something, hand out something. But yes, uh, we will do that. Yeah, we'll make sure of that. Um, Mitch, go ahead. Uh, your statement is, uh.
Well, it's really just the, uh, just the idea that we should be putting not just Vermin's website, uh, via our website, just a way to access it. Uh, but maybe just a brief summary on Vermin and maybe why we support him, even if it's not full platform, just a page on the United States Pirate Party website might be beneficial.
Is, uh, is, 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 does somebody want to volunteer to write that? Write a blog post?
I actually, I, uh, I want to go a step further than just a blog post and have it be, uh, the same way that we have in about section and the same way we have a, you know, calendar section, uh, we, that I could, uh, and I guess I could do it. I'm, I'll be home in just a little bit and I could try to work something up. Uh, just a page, you know, dedicated to the Vermin 2024 campaign. And it doesn't have to be big. I'll just make sure that it links to the website at the end of it.
Okay, that sounds awesome. Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a, oh, sorry.
No, go.
Vermin, sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Um, yes, I just wanted to say that I would, uh, be happy to help with that project for sure. I mean, we've got a ton of resources that you can, uh, we can send you away. Absolutely.
Awesome. Uh, Ari, go ahead.
I was going to make a suggestion, depending on you, of course, Vermin. Um, y'all are very heavy with, uh, video, which I think is one of the strengths that you had for the website. Um, potentially, uh, talk between yourself and somebody else at the Pirate Party could do really well for both sides. Um, y'all seem to do really well on your reach for, um, YouTube. And, um, Vermin already has an ingrained, um, YouTube following and social media following that could be utilized.
Okay.
Yes, and I did want to say to V that, uh, I am certainly happy to share any events that you all have going on and help promote, uh, uh, you know, any days or things, just any things, uh, happy to share that stuff, of course.
Great. That's awesome. That's, that's what this partnership is about. Sharing and mutual aid. Because that's what we like. All right, um, Mitch, go ahead.
Uh, not to say that any change would be expected, but is there anything from the, from Vermin or the Vermin team that you would like to see out of the US Pirate Party during this campaign?
There are a few members that I would indeed like to make walk the plank. And I would like to see them out of the Pirate Party, as you so succinctly put. Well, uh, no, I, I just, um, being facetious, of course. And what, what do I want to, which I assume by you mean, what, what might I expect or, or might, what I hope to get out of the partnership between our two great organizations? And, uh, I believe that is, uh, you know, a mutually beneficial, uh, promotional opportunity. Especially, uh, if we can lean in just a little bit to the, uh, the, the pirate argmatey sexy aspects of cultural touchstone that, uh, that the public really responds to. And it, it's my theory that, you know, you know, maybe they might not know right away what the Pirate Party stands for, but they, they know they want to be part of it because it looks like it's so much fun. Um, so that, you know, that is what I would like to push to the forefront. Um, and I guess what, what I would hope to get out of it or expect out of, out of the party uh, is just that understanding and that, that we are approximately on the same page of what we are trying to make happen. And, uh, you know, that, that is, I would say, is to, uh, promote fun and, and try and lure people in, uh, by it being so much fun. And, uh, and like that. And, you know, presenting, um, a, a slightly, uh, you know, a, a libertarian, if you will, message, but a left libertarian leaning message, if you will, uh, to the public. Uh, and in that, in that in and of itself is sort of a touchy thing, uh, given the current, current state of, um, you know, the libertarian movement, if you will. So.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're shying away from that L word a little bit just because it's gotten such, uh, it's gotten shit on so badly over the last couple of years. Um, and it's, it's, it's really, it makes me angry, honestly, that we can't, you know, if that word doesn't mean what it's supposed to mean. And I guess that happens with other stuff too, but.
It's why we're pirates, matey. That's why we are pirates.
That's why we're fucking pirates. Uh, okay, so, um, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go last call on anything else we need to discuss tonight, and we'll get, we're gonna get started.
Drew, do, do we need to do the vote to ratify the results or anything, or did we decide that we didn't do that?
No, that's not necessary.
Okay, cool. Just wanted to make sure.
No, and, and so one thing, oh, yes, there's one thing that I would like to put out there. Oh, so that's the other thing. The Vermin Campaign meets on Wednesdays at seven thirty Eastern. So if you guys, uh, reach out to Dez if you want to be included. Uh, yes, we did triple check the bylaws. So we don't, none of that's necessary, but what we do need in the bylaws, and that brings, brings up a good point, we don't have anything in the USPP bylaws about candidates.
What, in terms of, you mean in presidential or?
Nothing, there's nothing in our bylaws, in the USPP bylaws about candidates, like at all. It's all about officers. We don't have anything candidate. So the, the only thing you'd really want to do is, is kind of like, it would be presidential candidates, but we also probably want to have, uh, the ability uh, in our bylaws so that the USPP can nominate, uh, somebody in a state that doesn't have a party, if they want to, if somebody wants to run. We can give a nomination to somebody in a party, uh, in a state that doesn't have a, uh, uh, in a state that doesn't have their own party. So. Um, yeah, if you guys want to take, if, if you guys that are into the bylaws stuff want to take a look at that, that is something we need to, is something that we're lacking right now. Vermin, what you got?
Yes, um, I would just say, related, um, I would like, uh, it, conceptually, as the loophole being that this campaign is treated more as not, as if actually, um, you know, just a promotional campaign. It's more, as opposed to a political campaign, more of a promotional, uh, campaign slash membership drive um, awareness, um. I, I might, I might suggest that and, uh, you know, it's sort of how I feel that, that it looks.
Yeah, and, and what, what I was just going over for him and wasn't, hasn't had anything to do with your campaign in particular, it's just, we just have a hole in our bylaws that we don't have anything about candidates and how they're nominated or how we handle vacancies, all that technical bullshit that some of us hate dealing with, but it should be in there. Um, so. Um, yeah, uh.
I, I, I think if there are any questions, excuse me, uh, Mr. Pirate Party. Why, why is Vermin Supreme, uh, why is he your endorsed candidate? And, you know, that's, that's the question. And you got the answer.
Because Vermin's a pirate. That's why, right? That's.
Are, amen.
That's why.
Amen, yeah. But yeah, we're, it's, it's gonna be a whole lot of fun. So thank you so much for, uh, for being part of this awesome fun that we are going to have.
Oh, I appreciate it. And I definitely think that it is going to be mutually beneficial. So. Um, yeah, we thank you guys as well, um.
And I, I'm treating this a soft rollout. I got to admit, um, you know, Ari's flag was so cool and I, I put out a little Twitter post the, the other night because it popped into my head and it seemed too cool not to put on paper or in the internet. It was like, uh.
We're not keeping it secret.
Yeah, no, Vermin, you know, Vermin, the, the elections are rigged and Vermin Supreme is the only candidate to do the friggin' and the riggin' that this country needs. Hope you like that slogan.
That is a good, that's a good one. Maybe we'll try and cut that out of there for a reel later on.
All right.
All right, I'm gonna, uh, last call. Anything else we need to discuss? Hands? Shouts, screams, bloody murder, anything?
Motion to adjourn.
There we go.
There we go.
Is there a second?
What we've all been waiting for.
Moment we've all been waiting for. That's what I was waiting for.
I second, I second.
All right, I'll take it unless I have an objection. And I'm not seeing any hands. Wait, uh, yeah.
I didn't know that was allowed.
Uh, I mean, I'll allow it if, uh, unless, unless somebody's, unless somebody's got an objection.
If there is a, uh, bylaw crisis with Vermin seconding, then I will second it as well.
There we go. All right. Uh, any objections? I've been waiting for objections. I'm not seeing any hands. I think we're good. All right, thank you, everyone. Uh, so, uh, everybody get out there and vote Vermin. Vote Joe Onorowski if you're in Massachusetts. And who's, what's, what district is he?
That would be 17th Middlesex District.
There we go.
Just rolls off the tongue.
There we go. See, I knew somebody.
I, I had the, I had the pleasure and the privilege to collect signatures for Joe. So I, I had the, the opportunity to stare at that district for a little bit.
Well, it's good we had you here, Mitch. And, uh, yeah, so remember, if if purchasing is an ownership, then piracy isn't theft. That's right. Piracy isn't theft. And vote pirate. Get out there and do that. And, uh, we will see you uh, in two weeks back here on Jitsi. Uh, or actually YouTube, if you're watching us on YouTube. Uh, next week will be, uh, an IRC meeting. All right.